Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll have anyone who wishes to address the commission regarding items that are not on the public hearing. Public hearings scheduled tonight are 65 and W rezoning and the Land Development Code Amendment. Does anybody wish to address the commission about items that aren't on the agenda? Thank you. At this time, I'd like to explain the procedure for public hearings. The applicant will be given an opportunity to make a presentation. After that presentation, I'll ask those in favor of the applicant to speak, then those in opposition to speak. The applicant will then be given an opportunity for rebuttal. After all the testimony has been heard, the public and the public input portion of the hearing will be closed, and questions will be taken from the planning commission. I'd like now to swear in anyone who wishes to speak in front of the commission tonight. So if you wish to speak, please stand up, raise your right hand, and say, just answer affirmatively, "Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in matters before the commission, or the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, please answer, 'I do.'" Thank you. So first, we'll hear 65 and W rezoning. Are there any postings or notification requirements?
Yes, there are. There are three. One posting is required to be in the newspaper, another is required to be mailed to all property owners within a 400-foot radius, and the last notice is required to be posted, a sign is required to be posted on the property. All three posting requirements have been met, and staff has received all the necessary documentation.
Thank you. The staff report, posting log, and affidavit of mailing are made a permanent part of the record. Let's see, staff, are you going to make a brief presentation of this case?
Yes, I am. Blue Hawk Investments LLC requesting approval of the rezoning, a preliminary development plan, and a height exception for a proposed self-storage building and commercial pad site at 6543 Wadsworth Boulevard. The applicant is requesting to repurpose an existing 25,000-square-foot building for self-storage and is proposing a new fast-food coffee shop on the vacant parking lot to the north. The self-storage use is not permitted in the current PUD-BPR zoning district, but is allowed in the applicant's requested PUDBP district. The PUDBP district is consistent with a comprehensive plans future land use designation of commercial. The applicant is also requesting a height exception for the proposed self-storage use from the existing 32 feet of the existing building to a requested 41 feet. The existing building is not configured to allow for a three-story indoor storage facility as the current indoor self-storage market demands. The applicant is aware that the location of the self-storage building is an advantageous location for commercial uses, and they are providing a new commercial pad site on the vacant parking lot to the north. Based on staff's review, we are recommending approval of the rezoning preliminary development plan and height exception. We are conditioning the approval of the preliminary development plan so that all minor review comments from this review will be addressed in the final development plan.
Thank you. Is there a representative of the applicant present?
Yes.
Please come to the podium. Please say and spell your last name and your address for the record.
Sure. My name is Paul Ferreira, last name spelled F as in Frank, E double R, E I R A. I'm a principal with Blue Hawk Investments. We're located at 275 Grove Street, Suite 2400, Newton, Massachusetts.
Please continue with your presentation.
First, thank you for allowing us the time this evening to present our proposal, and I want to thank Will Tucker and his staff. We've enjoyed meeting with them for the past year. A little bit about Blue Hawk. So we're Private Equity Real Estate Investment Group, and we typically work in these settings where we seek zoning changes and entitlements and work collaboratively with municipalities. And so we've focused historically on mixed-use developments, as well as multifamily hospitality. We've been focusing lately on self-storage, and we've been doing a bunch of it nationally with a joint venture partner. We've developed over, you know, $450 million worth of projects. I'd like to take a moment to introduce our team, a couple of our team members, two of whom are local and two of whom are from Massachusetts, but working with Otten Johnson, Brian Conley and Allison Alteris. Been working with them since day one, navigating the zoning process. Gene Engineering, Steve Sarisa and Arnie Niemeyer, based here locally in Arvada, has worked with us on the civil engineering side. Locally in Massachusetts, both companies are registered to conduct business in Colorado. McNamara-Salvia, we've worked with closely on structural engineering considerations, and Radnor Design on the landscape architecture. I'd like to just briefly review, you know, why we're here, and we're seeking a zoning change to Lot 1 and to this, I think everybody knows, the Sportline building, essentially to allow a state-of-the-art, four-story, climate-controlled, fully interior-accessed self-storage facility. And we are allocating 21 parking spaces for the use. The current requirement, I think, is about three. We're also seeking to revise the height of the existing building, to the proposed height of 41 feet, 43 for the parapet. And by way of reference, the parapet towers, or the tower elements are about 45 feet, so we're still a couple feet below that. At the suggestion of the city staff, we also, you know, began exploring the opportunity to redevelop the north parcel, which is where all the parking currently is located, you know, roughly a 2925 square-foot drive-through, you know, café-type of tenant. And we're slated to allocate 45 parking spaces there, where, again, the city requirement is roughly 13. So why are we here today? You know, we'd like to make four points of support for this project, and, you know, we think it's an excellent adaptive reuse of the existing structure, you know. We'd have to make substantial, someone would have to make substantial renovations to the structure, you know, to have a chance of having it, you know, have a commercially viable use in the future, you know. We think it could continue to be challenged in a retail sort of setting. We think the height is substantially below the neighboring, you know, properties as well. We think it fits into the context of the community. Number two, we're, you know, we don't pursue these projects lightly. We're a national group. We're capitalized very strongly. We think the market here is, you know, underserved, and, you know, we're a very data-centric type of group, and we have a pretty rigorous due diligence and review process with our partners. And we feel that the amenity use that self-storage represents, both residential and for small-business customers, is a use that's required in this area. The third point is, you know, we think that with the infill development, we call it, the northern parcel where the parking is, we think that, based on our discussions with, we've engaged a local retail broker to, you know, discuss potential tenants with us, and the interest has been very high. And it's an excellent drive-through candidate, and there's been significant interest, and we think that that would activate that parcel pretty nicely, and as well as be an adjacent amenity to some of the, you know, high school and Marcella Manor and some of the other uses. The last point, and I think it's important as well, is that, you know, of all the uses, you know, I know there's a lot of development going on in multifamily and office and retail. I mean, self-storage is a low-impact use, you know, and I think we're converting the building, and I think so the construction will have a low impact, and so will traffic. Just, you know, to take you through some of the milestones, you know, we've been at this a little bit, started discussions with the city over a year ago now, and, you know, we conducted an outreach meeting in March of this year. We also reached out to the owners of Marcella Manor and, you know, explained to them our goals and what we're trying to accomplish, all of which was positive. We engaged with the city back and forth on the comments based on guidance that we had from Otten Johnson and Gene, and it was all, we think, positively received, and we moved to file our preliminary development plan in October, and we sit here or stand here before you today, asking for your support. So we're excited about the opportunity, and we have a strong reputation of executing on the projects that we can get involved in. And I should also point out, we'll work with local groups, but we also have a sizable construction group. So I know a lot of times, you know, particularly folks from outside, you know, the area, you know, most of what we do are adaptive reuse and repositions, and they typically include a fair amount of construction. And so we spend a fair amount of time, you know, developing that expertise, and we have, you know, a pretty sizable construction company that would work with local groups to execute on this redevelopment plan. So with that, I'd like to introduce Eric Vogel, who is our Director of Design and Construction. And Eric is 20 years in the architectural business, and architect by training, and I think he's got some neat things to share and can get into some of the details as well. Thanks again for your time.
Good evening. My name is Eric Vogel. My last name is spelled V-O-G-E-L. I'm with Blue Hawk Investments at 275 Grove Street in Newton, Massachusetts. Again, thank you for the opportunity to present this challenging project, and as Paul said, I'd like to sort of walk through our process in developing the plan for this and talk about particularly how to address the height requests that we're asking for. But when we started this process, and just to let you know, I was raised in Lakewood. I moved to New England in the late 80s, and it's exciting to be back here. I actually presented to the city of Arvada back in the early 80s, so it's nice to be back. I kind of miss Colorado, but things have changed a lot since 1983, and we spent quite a bit of time with Otten Johnson and with Gene Engineering to understand how Arvada has developed their zoning and what the reasons were and what the intention was. Because in order to understand how to reposition this site, we had to really understand this and get to know it and get familiar with it. And as outsiders, we sort of came to it in a fresh way. So the previous, or this slide, basically, it represents, we sort of gathered a lot of data, asked a lot of questions, started to try to understand what was going on, and understand this from a zoning standpoint and a use standpoint. We then looked at it from a contextual standpoint, and really started to look at this building, which Sportline is a very historical building. I actually remember that I got my letter jacket here, and it's got a history here, and it's got a position on Wadsworth Boulevard. And the Wadsworth Boulevard corridor is, you know, as it's evolved, it's become a part of that fabric. So we considered that and said, "Well, it's important to look at that building and try to maintain it in a way and reposition it." But then, what happens if we reposition it, and we have this big empty area to the north, which is the parking to satisfy that particular use? And we went through the process and came to the idea of subdividing this parcel and reusing the Sportline building and transforming it into self-storage. So just a little bit on the background of process, you know, we walked the site, we tried to figure out what would work within this context and in the master plan of the Wadsworth corridor. The aerial view of this is pretty straightforward, but I wanted to show it as the existing condition so that we can present the proposed condition. The proposed condition is, as I said, to subdivide the lot right down the center line of Schneider Way, reuse the existing building, the Sportline building on Lot 1, and increase its height so that we can accommodate the capacity necessary for the self-storage facility. But at the same time, kind of fill in this missing tooth, which is the parking area, and turn that into something that's actually, it actually reinvigorates this site and creates a new identity on Wadsworth Boulevard. The idea would be, again, a retail, drive-through, café-style venue that could be incorporated into that area and become a part of our little plan. To simply break it down, as I said, we subdivided this parcel into Lot 1 and Lot 2 along the center line of Schneider Way. Lot 1, we are presenting and proposing this to be, its land use to be self-storage. It's about a 59,000-square-foot lot, and we made a little mistake on our presentation. It occupies about 43% of Lot 1. The 27.5% that you see is actually the lot coverage for the entire parcel. We are requesting a height increase of 41 feet to the roof of the building, 43 feet to the parapet, and we are suggesting 21 spaces. We really only need minimal then, but we think that we should satisfy the capacity here. Lot 2, there really aren't a lot of requested changes, except for subdividing, and we are proposing that that be a retail and coffee shop. Its coverage is about 6.43%, and we'd look at a height of around 25 feet for that as we develop the design with the chosen vendor. The parking would be about 45 spaces. The parking requirement's about 13 spaces. So our biggest challenge is how do you transform a building, the architectural character of Sportline, increase its height to 41 feet, and integrate that change into the existing architecture? And our proposal is preliminary. We want to keep on developing it, but the idea really is to, and also, just to, we need to create a new identity here. We'd like to freshen up this and create a new identity for the storage vendor. So what we're considering is introducing new materials that are sympathetic to the existing materials, create a new harmony that basically blends that upper tier into the existing structure, and actually doesn't announce the building, but actually reintegrates the building into the fabric of Wadsworth Boulevard. We're still working with it. We'd love feedback as we present the final development plan, but that's our concept that we're developing at the moment. On Lot 2, it's a little simpler. It's a brand-new lot. It's a brand-new building, and although we haven't selected a retailer yet, we wanted to show some precedent imagery of what this could be, introducing that drive-through café-style venue with outdoor seating and, you know, again, a new identity on Wadsworth Boulevard. That's our presentation. Thank you very much. We're here to answer questions for you and to respond to any comments. Thanks.
Thank you. I'll now open the hearing for comments from the public. First, those who are in favor of the application? Anyone that would like to speak? Oh, Mr. Jacobson.
Thank you, commissioners. My name is Fred Jacobson, J-A-C-O-B-S-E-N, and I am the current owner of Sportline at 6543 Wadsworth. I just wanted to just update you a little bit about the retail side of things. In our business, when we designed this building 15 years ago, things have changed perhaps a lot in that 15-year period. We specialize in three different parts. We have a retail component to our store. We have a team sales component where we have 10 people that cover the city and the surrounding areas with outside sales, and then we also have a lettering facility inside that building. So as time has come on, our retail side of our business, basically, I don't know if collapse is a good word, but we could figure out some adjective that we could use there, but it's changed significantly in the last 15 years. And that change is really what's bringing this about. So now, we really don't need the retail side of things that we did 15 years ago. Things have changed that quickly and that rapidly in our current state of retail sales, not only in our business, but in many other businesses all the way around. So we are, you know, planning on continuing to be located in the Arvada area with our team side of sales and our lettering side of sales, but we are going to be deemphasizing the retail side, which is really what brings this about. And so I hope that you look at this favorably. I think that they've done an excellent job of putting together their presentation and making sure that it fits in the surrounding area, and I hope that you support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak in favor? Anyone that would like to speak against? We have no need for rebuttal then. I'm sorry. Well, please come to the podium. Ma'am, could we have your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, it's Alina Vallejos, and I live at the Marcella Manor, across the street from this property, at 6555 Schneider Way.
Thank you. Could you spell your last name for us?
V as in Victor, A-L-L, E-J-O-S.
Thank you, ma'am.
We have a school behind our building, and then there's a 200 unit. The main objection I have is that, how will, my concerns are how will it impact Schneider Way, which is not a through street? Schneider Way, which is not a through street, and how will it impact the traffic that's already quite liberal on Wadsworth Boulevard? Any entrances to this storage or the restaurant facility would be where? Wadsworth Boulevard, or would it be Schneider Way, which is just that, just a Schneider Way? It's not a through street. Also, how would it impact Arvada High School behind us? Those are my concerns. The impact on Schneider Way, Wadsworth Boulevard, the high school.
Thank you very much. The applicant has an opportunity to rebut those objections?
I'll have to adjust again, sorry. In our preliminary study for this site, we enlisted the services of Fred Lance Associates to do a traffic assessment. Looking at the existing traffic impact from Sportline and comparing it to the diminished traffic load from the repositioning of Sportline building into a storage facility, and the impact of the drive-through facility, what we found was there is a minimal change in overall traffic impact for this site. That's going to go into much more detail as we get into detailed traffic flow analysis of the site in the final development plan, but in terms of traffic, it really is minimal. To address the issue with regards to Arvada High School, I think that there is a benefit here, and we noticed this again today when we were on-site. There is a lot of pedestrian traffic trying to get across Wadsworth Boulevard to the existing Starbucks and to the other food venues across the street. We're hoping that this venue will become an attraction for the Arvada students, and with the area around it, it shouldn't have a large impact on Marcella Manor. Again, I think that requires detailed study and proving, but we feel that the site will be able to accommodate that. Your last question had to do with Marcella Manor, and I was wondering if you could...
No, 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 no.
About Schneider Way.
Please, please address the commission.
I'm sorry. Again, I go back to the traffic on Schneider Way. There is going, I mean, as I said, we need to do detailed traffic flow, but Schneider Way will not be impacted any more than it is now from the existing Sportline traffic impact.
Thank you.
Thanks.
At this time, I'll close the public input portion of the hearing and invite questions from commissioners. Mr. Goff.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Chair. So this goes back to, we look at the potential flow of traffic on Wadsworth heading what would be southbound. Is there any plan, without actually having additional traffic study, is there any plan to add a turn-in to the site? Is there, have you looked at that yet? It looks like they're just one way in, one way, well, there's one way in on Schneider Way and one way out on Schneider Way to Wadsworth.
The short answer is no. We were planning to keep the same, you know, egress, ingress and egress, but there's opportunity for sure to work through that. But again, based on the traffic, limited traffic study as it were, we didn't feel the need to change anything. Worked pretty well.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Connell.
Actually, this is just a question of information, to relate for information. What are the hours of service or availability for the storage facility?
They're typically, you know, no earlier than 8:30, and they typically close by 10.
Thank you.
Ms. Wolfson.
Thank you. Can you talk to me a little bit more about the building height? I know you said that the proposed building height will not exceed the height of the existing parapet towers. Well, it looks like it's just under those towers. Will that be for the entire building, so you'll raise the whole mass of the building, or can you discuss that a little more in detail? I think I might not be understanding.
And we will, we do, as I said, we want to develop this further and present it in full design. The intention, the existing tops of the towers are at about 45 feet, plus or minus eight inches. The idea would be that the main building is raised to 43 feet, 42 to 43 feet for the parapet, and again, we're still trying to detail this and squeeze as much volume into this new building. So the main building will be at about 42 to 43 feet, and the new eyebrow that will replace the hipped ruse on the tower will be at about 43 feet. So that's kind of where we are, 43 or 44 feet. So we are, the main building is going to be about, yeah, about four feet below the existing tops of the towers.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. McGee.
Commissioner, can I just clarify?
Sure.
I just want to be sure. 41 feet is the top of the building, 43 feet's the top of the parapet. So there's a two-foot differential.
43 is the top of the proposed parapet, whereas the existing parapet is 45?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. McGee.
Thank you, Chairman Owens. A question for staff. So how unusual for a neighborhood meeting where no members of the community attend? I was surprised by that.
I'm sorry, is the question, is it unusual for neighbors?
Well, how unusual? I've not seen that happen where there were no members of the public that attended the neighborhood meeting that they were at, the consultants were at, and...
Sure, it happens from time to time.
Sure, it happens from time to time, depending on the contentious nature of the proposal. It is hard to forecast what the turnout would be. For this particular one, we just didn't have a turnout at that meeting.
All right, so it does happen, okay. A couple of questions for the applicant, please. First, though, you said it's a lot two, maximum height of 25 feet, so it's going to be a single-story building, the new café, drive-through?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I guess just the, you don't need, you're not proposing that it be an office building and need additional parking for a second or a third floor?
No, sir.
Okay, great. So when you do construction, and I know this is a preliminary development plan rather than a final, will you remove the entire parking lot for constructing the new building, the new commercial building?
No.
So you'll just build the building there and leave the...
Well, we'll improve, you know, we'll improve the whole site, and those are some of the finer details we have to get through. But, you know, the site is, you know, about an acre, and the footprint is 29-inch square feet. So we're going to be able to sort of construct it pretty localized.
Take out what you need and put the building...
And then we'll, you know, restripe parking and new landscaping and all the things, new planting and that sort of stuff. But, yeah, we won't, we shouldn't need to disturb the whole parking lot.
Okay, so, and I know you're still looking at the design of the self-storage unit, which I found, you know, very modern-looking. I mean, the commercial buildings that you showed will have their own design based on who that tenant will be. So any idea to make them complimentary in any way? Add some elements that make them look somewhat the same?
I'm not the architect.
Okay, sure.
Actually, one of the interesting things about Wadsworth Boulevard as a corridor is it is very diverse. Trying to create a synergy between the two buildings, although they're not really related, I think would be probably the wrong approach. I think what we're trying to do is express the brand identity for the cube storage facility because you notice that there's a new branding happening.
All very much.
But let that food and drive-through venue create the new identity and that diversity along Wadsworth Boulevard.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Sorry. Mr. Hannon.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Question for staff. Our last development along Wadsworth with a drive-through had huge traffic impacts, to the point where we have new signs up now telling you not to block traffic. Are we comfortable with the traffic analysis that we received to date and what this is going to look like in the future?
Yes, Commissioner. So typically for sites like this, we require, we don't require a traffic study because the trip generation of the site, of the entire proposal, is a difference of 62 trips. And anything below 100 trips typically doesn't warrant a traffic letter or a traffic study. But in this case, we actually did ask for a traffic letter, and some analysis was provided as part of the proposal. What is interesting about the site that works in terms of not just the trip generation is that the site is accessed from three access points. And in terms of access off of Wadsworth, the busiest leg of the roadway surrounding the site, there's a right and right out and a restricted access point. So in some cases, where there isn't a parking lot or internal circulation type of design, the traffic flow tends to impact the streets. In this case, because there are multiple ways to get in and out, the primary entrance and exit is restricted, and the fact that there is a parking lot to contain the traffic within the area, I do feel comfortable with this design.
Excellent, thanks very much. That's a great answer.
Sure.
If you care, Mr. Chairman?
Well, if Mr. Hannon would like to address you, that's fine, otherwise...
Yeah, it was for staff, but if you'd like to speak, please join me.
The only thing I would add is, you know, it's a concern, actually, that we raised as well, and we discussed it with Will and his staff. But one thing that's worth noting, I guess this doesn't work.
It doesn't work up there.
So is the queue line around the building, you know, so one of the concerns, you come off, we think most people will use Wadsworth in the morning, right, coming down? And the ability to sort of swing in and obviously still be on the driver's side, okay? You know, and this has come up in some of our discussions with potential tenants, is to sweep that turnaround. So when you calculate that distance, it's actually a pretty decent distance away from Wadsworth. So it is something I just want to point out that we're studying and we've discussed as well with staff.
Excellent. While you're there, have we looked at access to the storage unit itself? How do we expect that to happen? Just through that front door? Or is there going to be garage doors?
Outlet.
Sorry. Yeah, our pointer doesn't work well on the big screen.
We've looked at, we've looked at actually three points of access for storage. And the way that it typically works, there's the welcome entrance, which is where the office is, where the retail component is. And then there's the get my stuff out of the storage and get my stuff into the storage cube. The proposed addition that is in the current loading area will actually become that queuing and loading area for somebody offloading. We also have on the backside of the building, we are proposing having a, it's a regular user exit where somebody can bring out parcels and get out to the cars on the Wadsworth side of the facility. So again, we're looking at all of that and looking at internal circulation, and we hope to present all of this in the final planning and development.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you. I have a question for staff. When, Marcell Manor is clearly within 400 feet of the site, correct?
That's correct.
And were the individuals that live there notified of this, or simply the management of Marcell Manor?
Simply the property, the owner, the property management owner of it was, not each individual unit was notified.
Right, and so I just want to understand, our city code doesn't make them ask the applicant to notify the people that are most affected? Our city code asks the people, or asks the applicant to just notify the management, is that correct?
That's correct. We take an inventory of all property owners within a 400 radius using Jefferson County assessor's records.
Thank you very much. That's a concern to me, that we didn't, the people that seem to be the most affected by this particular project aren't required to be notified, and that's probably why there weren't more people at a public meeting. Thank you. Mr. Griffith.
Thank you, Chair. First, I'd like to say that I really appreciate the adaptive reuse. I think that that's a very difficult thing to tackle and to tackle well. So I certainly appreciate that, and I think that with Arvada growing the way it is and the pace that it is, that storage facilities are certainly necessary within the community. I have a couple of questions, though, with that being said. The first one has to do with the future land use within the comp plan. This area is designated as neighborhood community commercial. Is there an official criteria for that at all, or is that a very general retail designation?
It is our broad designation for commercial, as the comprehensive plan calls out.
Okay, and then the other thing I wanted to clarify, which it says plainly, we've had it tonight, said, the zoning change would exclude any future residential on this, both of these two plots, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So one thing I'm having a little bit of trouble with is looking at the comprehensive plan. In the comprehensive plan, Wadsworth Boulevard and the corridor are mentioned several times in a variety of ways. One of the ones that's stuck with me is a link between Arvada Center and Old Town. And it's basically looking at establishing it as a cultural and activity district. The goal was actually by 2017, with emphasis on retail nodes, pedestrian activity, walkability. So for me, I'm having a little bit of trouble trying to figure out how a storage facility use can activate a pedestrian experience on a corridor that's supposed to be cultural and activity-based.
Staff acknowledged that at the beginning, when the applicants first came to their pre-application meeting. In that meeting, we had Arvada Economic Development Authority, and they had the same concern about how can we use this site more for retail? And that was one of the conditions, or one of the items we brought up, and the applicants came back with this pad site for retail. As I said earlier, they're aware of the site and how advantageous it is for some new commercial or retail, but they describe it as a difficult building to repurpose for that retail. So without them being able to do it on the existing Sportline, they offered the new pad site, and that was their response to our initial comments.
Thank you for that. And then one last question. This has to do with security. So this is a storage facility. Lighting is important, security is important. Can you tell me a little bit about the lighting strategy and how that relates to operational hours and buffering from nearby residents and business?
Security is very important, not only from the inside, but also from the outside. Typically, in these sort of self-contained, multi-story facilities, there are a series of external and internal cameras that are monitoring everything. The exterior doors are always keypad or FOB activated. There are registering, there's registration software that knows which user, which cubicle user is in the building and when they leave, actually, because it's all closely monitored. With respect to lighting, our, we had a really, we had a long discussion about this because we have this challenge in all of these sites. And at 10 o'clock at night, and by the way, I'm a dark sky fan, I think that things should be controlled at a much higher level. And we've actually worked out ways on a couple of other projects where at 10 o'clock when the building shuts down, that key areas are lit, downlit at entrances and areas, but major lighting is taken down. The cameras can still monitor all the entrances, but we don't have to have glare and light going into people's windows. So we will tackle this one the same way. Okay?
And then the buffering, that I think is mentioned in the report, there's existing evergreen, or existing deciduous trees, and there will be additional evergreen trees planted, is that correct, between the...
Additional evergreens, a combination of, and my landscape architect's not here to address it, but I'll speak as best as I can. We want to make this a balanced site that uses water effectively, but also can sort of create a, because we have these big setbacks, a green respite along Wadsworth Boulevard. So we are looking at a combination of deciduous trees, but also, I think we're also looking at some coniferous trees, but we're also presenting some deciduous trees to create a mix and a blend.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no further questions, Ms. Wolfslaw.
Thank you. One more question, and maybe this is for staff. I see that there's an existing four-and-a-half-foot sidewalk on Schneider Way. Does that meet city standards for sidewalk width?
So in terms of new construction and the way our standards are shown in engineering standards, no, this does not match the engineering standards, where a detached five-foot sidewalk is required along streets. However, at this location, the existing sidewalk is close enough, I'd say, to the standard that we have, to the five-feet width. And because that, the area is basically, the building's not being demolished and rebuilt, it's not something that we asked for in the process of evaluating the project.
Okay, that would be something that I would be a little interested in to see. I know, like, a traffic report will only analyze cars, but it seems like there would be a lot of foot traffic on Schneider Way from the school to the proposed coffee or fast-food kind of restaurant, that there may be a lot of foot traffic in that area. So sidewalk width would be something I would be interested to see analyzed in that, as this moves forward.
All right, seeing no further questions, the Chair will entertain a motion. Commissioner McGee.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move that Z2017-0007, 65 and W rezoning from City of Arvada, PUD-BPR, which is Planned Unit Development Business Professional Residential, to PUDBP, Planned Unit Development Business Professional, 6543 Wadsworth Boulevard, be recommended to City Council for approval. This motion is based on the findings of fact and approval criteria on pages nine and 10 of the staff report.
All right. Is there any discussion of the motion? Mr. McGee.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I agree with Commissioner Schmidt. I want to applaud the applicant for the creative reuse of an existing building, saves a lot of resources, and I think it's just an interesting way. I do also find it interesting just that the corridor that Commissioner Schmidt also brought up about the art kind of areas between the Arvada Center and Old Town, difficult to do with a building that had one purpose in mind when it was built and designed, but it's a good structure worth saving and repurposing. I will want to make a suggestion to the applicant, and this is an unusual situation that I don't think we've ever come across, where we have more than 40 or 50 parking spaces above the criteria for these buildings. I mean, well above. It's, 13 are required, and there are 66 on the site. I think the three for the storage unit is too little, but it's based on our land development code, so I understand that. I would suggest to the applicant that maybe they find a way to eliminate some of those parking spaces. Maybe along Wadsworth, add some zariscaping, just to reduce the number and add, it takes away that kind of heat island effect, and so I would just recommend that, but I will be supporting this amendment, this proposal. Thank you.
Commissioner Griffith.
Thank you, Chair. For me, I think I'm having, like I said, I'm having some trouble with this one, specifically how it meets item A on the rezoning approval criteria and item number one on the preliminary development plan criteria, the way it basically jives with the comp plan. I think that the primary issue that I have is the pedestrian experience, the activation at ground level, with the language in the comprehensive plan relating to those two items. In its current iteration, I can't support it. I think that there are opportunities where it could be changed to make that experience better, but right now, that's where I'm at.
Commissioner Griffith, I agree. I find in the approval criteria that this does not meet an activated piece of Wadsworth. And I think that Wadsworth is a vibrant corridor that needs to be full of activated activity, activated businesses. And a storage facility is not an activated business. It is a, it's a business that will be in place for 40 or 50 years. It will generate no tax revenue. It will generate no new jobs, one or two new jobs, but it's net minus in jobs. So I would say this is a deactivation of this parcel, not an activation of the parcel. And that leaves me right off the bat saying that it does not meet the comp plan. And I think that, and honestly, I don't think you have to go any further, because I think the, meeting the comp plan is the most important thing that a rezoning has to do. And since it doesn't, I too cannot support this motion. Anyone else? All right, seeing no further discussion, all members, please vote. There are three yeses and four noes. The noes are Mr. Owens, Ms. Connell, Mr. Griffith, and Ms. Wolfslaw. So that motion does not pass. Given that the rezoning didn't pass, we don't move forward with the PDP. Given that the rezoning didn't pass, we don't move forward with the PDP. So, good luck at City Council, gentlemen.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
The applicant is?
This is completely, I think, within your discretion. You've already taken a vote on the proposal in front of you, but my understanding is the applicant, rather than moving forward to council or regrouping and starting over after a year, would like consideration being given to the possibility of the planning commit, allowing the applicant to work with the staff again to address some of the issues raised here at the moment, literally, of the motion being acted on, in an effort to have you as a commission potentially consider again or reconsider the proposal.
So, just to be clear, are they asking us to revote tonight?
No, I think they want the opportunity to work with the staff to address some of the concerns they heard very late in the public hearing, to perhaps gain a reconsideration of your vote at some time in the necessarily not-too-distant future as opposed to starting an application process over with the time that that involves.
Mr. Sampson, I'm not entirely sure how we should proceed. Is it possible that we go into executive session and ask for guidance from our council?
Yes, absolutely, we can. The code provides for reconsideration and we can discuss that process, that avenue to get there if that turns out to be a viable route.
Thank you. Then I will move that we adjourn to executive session to have, ask questions of our council. All members, please vote. All right. We will go to executive session and be back shortly.
Okay, we're back in normal session. Mr. Sampson.
Before we get started, Commissioner, or Chairperson Owens, the purpose of the executive session that we just completed was under Title 246402, the purpose being to receive legal advice from council. advice from counsel, and having done so, we're now back in open session. The process set out in our bylaws provides for a possibility of reconsideration of a vote. So what would be in order would be entertainment of a motion of that nature, and we'll proceed from there.
Thank you very much. The Chair will entertain a motion for reconsideration. Thank you. Seeing no motion, the vote stands as taken, and we will refer the motion or the issue to City Council with a recommendation of denial. Thank you very much. The next case tonight is LDC 2017-002, Land Development Code Amendment, Reno Park. Is there a staff summary?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the Planning Commission. While Rob gets our presentation up, I'll just go into a little bit of background. I'm here on behalf of the City of Arvada. My name is Cheryl Reich, one of the senior planners, and I'm here to present an amendment to the Land Development Code to implement our Reno Park design guidelines. As a little bit of history, in 2014, the city was approached by 85 percent of the property owners of the multifamily portion of the Reno Park Historic District, asking that the city consider downzoning the property so that multifamily housing could not be built in the district. This was primarily because it's a single-family neighborhood, and they felt the multifamily development would be out of character. Following that request, the city held public hearings, and in 2015, the rezoning was approved. As part of this process, it was also expressed that rezoning alone did not provide adequate protections for the neighborhoods, and they asked that we explore having some design guidelines drafted. So the city applied for a grant from the state, and we received a grant to hire a consultant to work with us to develop those design guidelines. Over the last year and a half, the city conducted four community meetings, two surveys, and we held a joint workshop with Planning Commission, City Council, and the Design Review Committee, and I believe some of you were able to attend that workshop to review a draft of those guidelines. We then followed that up with two additional workshops with City Council. And on November 20th of 2017, the design guidelines were adopted. So we're here tonight to talk about the necessary implementations to the Land Development There are four sections of the code that would need to be amended. In Article One, the Rules of Construction and Interpretation, the word "should" or "may" as used in the design guidelines will be identified as, for guidelines that are identified as mandatory design guidelines, shall be construed as mandatory, whereas normally you would see the word "should" and "may" to mean that it's optional. In Article Two, the duties of the powers of the Planning Commission will be amended to note that the Community Development Director has a responsibility for reviewing certificates of compliance with these design guidelines, and the Planning Commission would hear appeals of the director's actions. Article Three would be amended to outline that certificates of compliance are necessary for any land use activity that relates to a mandatory design guidelines. It would outline the process for review, the approval criteria, and the criteria for granting a waiver from a mandatory design guideline. Article 10 of the Land Development Code would identify the project area specifically to be as that area identified in the map in the design guidelines document. A finding of conformance to the comprehensive plan is necessary in order for a Land Development Code Amendment to be approved. There are a number of goals that we can review that relate to this type of project. Goal CG1 states that we need to plan Arvada as a city of different development-character districts. Specifically, the city will include a variety of development types, including rural areas, suburban residential neighborhoods, historic districts, redevelopment areas, and mixed-use communities that contain services, employment, and higher-density housing. Policy CC 1.3 deals with compatible infill, stating that the city will encourage new infill development to consider and be sensitive to the character of existing neighborhoods. Considerations shall include building scale, placement, size, height transitions, landscape, streetscape, or other design measures. Goal CC3 states that we need to identify places and assets that are unique and important to the community and to work to preserve them. Goal CC4 states that we preserve historic resources and expansion of historic preservation, education, and awareness in Arvada and Old Town. The city will explore ways to expand its historic resources, historic districts, and preservation programs, including developing design guidelines for other historic districts and resources. In addition, a finding of compliance with the intent of the Land Development Code is necessary for an amendment to the code, and specifically, the item that relates to this project is that we conserve and enhance the character of Arvada's older, established residential neighborhoods through the elimination of adverse factors, promotion of a balanced mix of housing types, and through appropriately scaled and planned infill development. We believe that we can make a finding of compliance with all of the policies in the Land Development Code and with the intent of the Land Development Code, and we request approval of these amendments.
Thank you very much. I'll now open the hearing for comments from the public. First, those who are in favor of the application. Ms. Ergle, I don't believe we swore you in, so...
No, you did not.
So could you please, your right hand, raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in matters before this commission are the truth and nothing but the truth? Please answer, I do.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Owens.
Please state your name.
My name is Kelly Ergle. I live at 5620 Allison Street.
Please spell your last name for the record.
E-A-R-G-L-E. Thank you. My home is actually one that is currently not in the historic section of Reno Park but is a Reno Park home. There are four that were not currently in the historic district, but hopefully someday will be, have been recommended at some point. And I just want to speak because I have been working with the neighbors. I actually got involved because the initial plan was to expand the historic district, but also this is my neighborhood and have been working very closely with my neighbors who do live on Yarrow Street and are all very much so in favor of this, along with those 85 percent. What I really want to point out to you guys is while this might seem very controversial, this is a compromise. The city staff has done an incredible job of listening to everyone, both homeowners in the area as well as residents of Arvada, and have found a compromise while working with this world-renowned, nationally-renowned historic architect in Norrie Winter. And by addressing the mass and scale as mandatory, and all of the other historic characteristics being advisory, it really genuinely is a compromise for all. And what it does is allow for those property rights of those who do not want to expand their small home to not feel out of place and compressed, but rather maintain the character of the neighborhood. And we strongly encourage you to not only listen to the City Council but take the advisement of, excuse me, of the city staff, but also City Council, who has spent the last four years really working closely with us as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else who would like to speak in favor?
If we can clarify the amendments before you tonight, our amendments to the Land Development Code to implement the Reno Park addition historic guidelines that have already been adopted.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Young, Y-O-U-N-G. I live at 7706 Robinson Way. I'm here to address a, I think these amendments are totally appropriate. My concern is that we are in the process of revising the Land Development Code right now. Will these changes get inadvertently deleted during that revision? I have the exact same concern with regard to the design guidelines for Old Town, and it just seems to me that instructions need to be given to those involved in redoing the Land Development Code, that the items related to historic preservation, the Old Town design guidelines, and the Reno Park guidelines must be preserved. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor? Anyone who wishes to speak against? No. At this time, I'll close the public input portion of the hearing and invite questions from members of the commission. Seeing none, the Chair will entertain a motion. Ms. Wolfslaw?
I move that LDC 2017-0002, the Land Development Code Amendment, Reno Park, be recommended to City Council for approval. This motion is based on the findings of fact and approval criteria on Page Four of the staff report.
Thank you. Is there any discussion of the motion? Seeing none, all members, please vote. There are seven yeses and zero nos. That motion passes. Staff, are there anything else we need to consider tonight?
Yes, the next meeting will be on December 19th, and that will include three items: the Old Town residences at 5565 Wadsworth Bypass, public storage at Wild Grass Commercial, which is basically 87th and Indiana, and Bear Electric, which is at 6762 Fig Street.
Thank you very much. Anything else from staff tonight?
I will not be in attendance at the December 14th meeting. I'll be out of the country.
December 19th, would you be there in that case?
Nope. Won't be there then either, sorry.
Anyone else know that they won't be here on the 19th? Awesome. I'm sure it'll be good fun for all. Anything else from staff? Then we're adjourned.